We are now thirteen months into this process of the church allowing me to come in and take the role of commission pastor. When we were standing here thirteen months ago, there were a lot of uncertainties and even said to many of you, "This is our plan," until somebody tells us otherwise. So there are some hurdles that we had to get through through the EPC. There were some things that we had to go through. We were able to do those. We were able to celebrate those. We were able to, along the way, establish a staff where we've added some roles and realigned some people's positions and what they did. And we're able to formulate what we believe is the team that God has placed here from a staff perspective to lead. In doing that, we've also have mobilized the elders to stop doing some of the things they were doing previously and focus mainly on being the safeguard, being the watch guard, if you will, of the spiritual direction and the spiritual content of our church. And so the elders have taken upon themselves and they have done this with such dignity and just such... I've been amazed to watch these men work, humble themselves, and come before the Lord and just say, "Okay, what can we do to be those guards? What can we be doing to watching the spiritual direction of this church?" And then we have gone to our deacons and we have mobilized them and said, "You are going to be the care and takers and you are going to come alongside and help me in my task of shepherding the church." And the deacons have just been so energetic in their desire to not only serve the people of the church, but to take care of the building of our church. And so if you see it, one of the things that my original desire was, was to take this three offices, if you will, we have the elders, we have the deacons, and we have the staff, and bring them together as one. One of the things we started doing is what we call super huddles, where three times a year, we come together and we talk about direction, we talk about vision, but we pray and we seek out the Lord and we're looking for that. And so this town hall meeting has been come out of those meetings and we are bringing you in because the most important and truthfully, the most important phase is, we now need the congregation to buy into where it is that we're trying to go. I think one of the things, you know, I get asked the question a lot, "Well, how's this going? How's this..." I went to Presbyterian recently and a couple of the people at Presbyterian used the word "experiment." "How's this experiment going?" And I'm like, "Well, you know, we blew up the half of the wing." You know, it's like a chemistry lesson gone bad. But I said, "I think, I truly believe with all my heart, the greatest asset that we have in this experiment is that I was not seen as somebody that was being brought in from another place and coming in and supposed to be a white knight that was just going to come in and fix all of the church's problems." I think many of you saw and said, "Okay, he's got to go back to school. He's got to do this. He's got to do this. He's going to need our help." And I think the greatest thing that God has done in Faith Church over the past thirteen months is all of you have leaned in together and we've said, "We will do this together. We will encourage him. We will support him. We will come alongside the staff. We're going to pick up the slack that's dropped. We're going to show grace and mercy when, when staff or elders or deacons forget something. We're going to come alongside because we know what the task is at hand." And so you have to understand that where we're at right now, and I believe we're in a really good spot right now, where we're at right now is because we have come together through the power of the Holy Spirit. We've got to be excited about that. Don't lose focus of that. I don't say this to boast. I have a 3.7 grade point average right now. That's a miracle. That's, that's, that's a sign of God's hand all over this. And I'm telling you that to say, because you all, and I don't fault anyone, I would too, but you all had so many questions, "Can this be done?" Friends, the experiment is over. It's being done. We are a church. Yes, be excited. We are a church. We are a church that has seen an average attendance of about 165 people 18 months ago to we are well over, our average attendance is well over 200 people right now. We had 250 people here in attendance today. We had over 300 people here for our Easter services. Now listen, one of the old things in churches, you measure nickels and noses and that's all you put your emphasis on. Where's your offering? Where's your attendance? And we're not measuring our nickels and noses, but please understand, nickels and noses are a response to the Holy Spirit moving. When the Holy Spirit is moving amongst us as a church, we are going to go out and we're going to share our faith. We're going to get people excited and we're going to come and we're going to bring them back in here because we believe that we know how to love. God has given us a great love and so we're going to share that with the community. We're going to share that through the garden. We're going to share that through House of Providence. We're going to share that through our ministries, our missions, our youth, our children, wherever it may be. We're going to be a better neighbor to Hamlin Elementary. We had one of our elders spend a good 20, 25 minutes the other day at the back fence talking to a family that borders and they have gone through so many sicknesses and so many ailments this past year. They're on our prayer list now. We're going to make an impact in this community, not because of who we are, but because of who he is. And so we have to get a little bit excited about where we are right now. We have to be excited about what's going on. And so we've laid out a map of where we want to go and what we want to do. Last July, at our first super huddle meeting, I got together all of the elders, deacons, and staff, and I asked them this hypothetical question. I said, "If you could walk into Faith Church 10 years from now, what would you want to see to let you know that God had been seriously at work in Faith Church over the last 10 years?" I just said, "Think about it. If you could walk in 10 years from now, you walked into those front doors, what would you have to see to be able to say, 'Wow, I am so disappointed I missed the last 10 years because God was seriously at work.'" And so we came up with, and we, we, we call it our render drawing. We came up with a render drawing saying, "This is what we'd want Faith Church to look like." And this is what it is. It's a gathering of broken people who are excited about, equipped with, and eager to engage their communities with the gospel for their good, for Christ's joy, and the Father's glory. We said in 10 years, "That's the kind of church we want to walk into. That's what we want it to look like." Well, that's really, really long to put on social media. So we refer to that as one thing. We call it one faith. One faith. We have one belief in one triune God. And yet we're also called to be one church, united together. I think in Jesus' prayer in John Chapter 17, I've gone back to this and I've taken our leadership to us time after time after time, where Jesus is sitting there and he's praying to the Father and he's saying, "And Father, now I pray for them and I pray that they will be one as we are one." And it's not just that we be unified, but we be unified for a purpose. And the purpose was so that the world may know your love. When we become more unified and we become more unified with Him and we become more unified with one another, the world is going to know that God loves them. So we are going to be about one faith. Our unity is going to come together through this. We then wanted to get a little bit more specific. And so we said, "What are some markings? What are some things that you would like to see in the people of Faith Church?" I'd like to share this with you because this, this list right here has so much since July impacted how I think. And when we go into strategy meetings and when we go into planning sermons and when we go into our creative planning, we think about this list and we think of, "How can we be shaping these people?" Let me share the list with you. The first is, these are the marks of the people that we want to see. First, people who are seeking out others that are lost and sharing their story and the gospel message with them. Amen? Come on, let's get excited. This is exciting. We want to see people who are seeing the gospel help people overcome their hurts and pains and then we want to come alongside and we want to celebrate with them. Let's get some testimonies. Amen, yeah. It's all right. No one will call us charismatic after today. Let's get a little excited. We want to see seekers and believers coming to the church hungering for more knowledge in community. We want to see people excited about Jesus Christ and longing for something greater than what the world offers them. We want to, as a result of more and more conversions, yes, God, please, God, please. We want to see, celebrate more baptisms and hear more testimonies. I hope and pray that we can start devoting service after service to testimonies. To the man who comes up and says, "I once was blind, but now I see. I once was lame, but now I walk." Man, that's a church I want to be a part of. We want to see people who are going out on mission trips and service projects. We want to see those as natural fixtures of our church calendar. We want to see people who are unashamed to be associated with and love those whose society and unfortunately the church has outcasted. We want to see people like special needs families coming in and saying, "I don't have a place to worship. I want more Jacobs. I want more Jacobs screaming in the middle of the service. I want more of that stuff going on because those families are hurting and they're looking for a spiritual home." We want to be a model of the Acts Two community where believers are taking care of one another and the gospel is being displayed in that. We want to have a concentrated focus on taking care of widows and orphans and visiting the prisoners. God says, "That's what religion is." And lastly, through the missional works of our people, we want to have expanded the footprint in the surrounding communities. Friends, we're not here for the fame of Faith Church. We're not here so that we can become someplace that ends up hosting conferences on how to plant churches and how to grow churches and this and that. But if we're going to be recognized, I hope and I pray that just as Jesus prayed in John 17, when people drive by our church, they'll say, "Those people know how to love. Those people are crazy in love with Jesus. And my life is better because those people are there." Those are the markings of the people of Faith Church we hope for in 10 years. Can you get behind that? So how are we going to get there? It's easy to say, "That's what we want to do." How are we going to get there? So we've come together as leadership and we have said, "Okay, we're going to concentrate our efforts for the time being. We don't have an expiration date on this, but right now, instead of trying to do a bunch of things, we're going to pour our efforts into three main areas. The first area is, we are trying to enhance the visitor experience. Number one on that list was let them know where they can clearly park, right? How nice was it to pull in and you're like, "Oh, that's where we're supposed to park, right? We have lines." What we want is, we want, when our visitors come to our church, we want them to be welcomed. We want them to be embraced. We want them to be informed in a way that makes them feel accepted and encouraged. We have a great group of people right now that are working back at our welcome table and they are working tirelessly to make sure not only that people are coming in and being welcomed, but they're being given the information. I've had several, and I wish I could give you an exact number, but I can tell you easily over a dozen people who have reached out to me as a result of their visits and said, "Pastor, can you tell me, what's your stance on this? What's your stance on this?" And I have answered them and some of those people have gladly returned and some of those people have said, "You're not the church for us." Praise God. And I've done everything I can to point them to other churches that I believe preach the Bible and say, "If we're not a right fit, maybe this is the right fit." We don't not looking to be all things to all people. We believe that God has put us here for a certain group of people and those are the people that we want to be ministering to and loving on. And so when they walk in, we want them to feel accepted. "We need your help. I know it's hard. I know some of you want to be introverts, but you have to reach out. You have to go see someone. You have to might say, 'Hey, listen, you might have been going here for 10 years, but that knucklehead last week on stage said, "I got to start meeting people I don't know. So I'm going to use me, use me as your excuse. Make sure you know the people that are here. Look around right now. Look around. Go ahead. I won't throw anything at you. Look around.'" If you don't know the people that are in this meeting, these are the people that I'm assuming are invested in the future of this church. If you don't know the people in this meeting right now, get to know them as soon as this meeting's over. Get to know the names. We're trying stuff. We'll have a pictorial directory coming soon, all of those things. And then you can walk around and go, "Oh, got it. Stu, got it. See the hair. Got it." Get involved. Make people feel welcome. Make them feel embraced. The second thing we want to do is we want to expand our community footprint. How do we make our community more aware of our church's existence and our desire to be salt and light, right? People drive by here. Unless you're looking in here, you don't know what church is here. If we're trying so hard to be salt and light, if we're trying to be the gospel in the flesh, how are they going to know we're here? Your help. Your help. Get involved in the garden. Get involved down at the farmer's market. Wear these T-shirts, all of those things. It's not again, because we're trying to boost message, but 1 Peter 3:15 says, "But in your heart set apart Christ as Lord and always be prepared to give a reason to anyone who asks why you have the hope that you have." My hope and my prayer is that you walk around and you say, and people see you and say, "There's something different about you." And then you say, "Yes, it's because of Jesus Christ. It's because of the hope I have because of what Jesus Christ has done on my behalf." And I want to share more with you. And as you share more with them and they need to get plugged in, you bring them in here and we get connected. This social media stuff that I'm not at all good at, get involved in it. Like, repost, do those things. Tweet, Snapchat, whatever we do. Chris tells me, and I'm not trying to be silly. Chris tries to explain to me, "There's these algorithms and there's these things out there. The more that we have things liked and the more that we have things reposted, the more that that message gets spread out." We're trying to now video our messages. It is not because I have a face for video, but our whole purpose in doing that is because we have found it's easier for people to get engaged and get equipped. People want to know if I'm going to come to your church, what's it going to look like? Do I have to dress up? Do I have to wear this? Do I have to do certain liturgy? All of those things. So we found that if we can send them little clips of our sermons and we've been able to shoot them, little things, it's going to help. Help us with that. Help us expand our footprint. The third thing that we're going to put our effort into is we're going to provide a dynamic Sunday morning worship experience. We are doing everything we can so that when you reach out to a friend, when you reach out to a loved one, when you're like, "I got one shot at this. I've been working on a coworker for a year. I need you guys not to have an off Sunday." We are working very hard at not having off Sundays. There's not an A-team and a B-team. There's not a, "Well, you're going to get the backups." You did not get Connor today because I was unable to or because Connor was a replacement. You got Connor because Connor is a man of God who has a passion and a vision that we believe in. And so when he gets up here and preaches, when Rusty gets up here and preaches, Darren, anyone else who gets up here and shares the word of God, it's because we believe in where it's going. It's not because we think we're the world's greatest preacher. It's not because we think we're the most musically talented, but we're going to give it our very best. Come in, be a part of that. One of the greatest ways you can participate is be here. Friends, if you look at our numbers, there are some weeks you walk in and you think we're the strange Chinese restaurant that serves cats, right? Nobody goes there. Am I allowed to say that? And then there's, and then there's other things. And then there's, and then there's other times you walk in and you think like we're passing out free cars, right? I know we're, I know we're a Michigan church. So some of you go south in the winter, some of you go north in the summer. Do everything you can to be here. Be active. Be participating. Support us in that way. If you are a regular contender, if you are a member of this church, I need you to understand something. 18 months ago, we were in a financial crisis. I think I can say that. Is that fair, John? Good. I'm not even going to look at John. We were in a financial crisis because of your faithfulness and because of God who owns a cattle on a thousand hills. We have predominantly been in the black all year round. Because of your faithfulness and giving, because of your faithfulness and giving, we've been able to paint the parking lot stripes. We've been able to go to House of Providence and say, "We're going to support a room. We're going to pray for you guys. We're going to get financially involved." We've been able to buy the software that's needed to be able to shoot these videos. We need you to stay faithful in that. And the more and more we, Lord willing, grow, the more and more we'll get more giving units, the more and more Thou free us up, not so that we can feel good about ourselves, but so we can help more orphans, so we can help more widows, so we can communicate the gospel to more places. I want, I've asked Dean Swanson, I've asked our missions committee, I want us to be serious that in five years, we're on the precipice, if not already there, of sending out our very own missionaries from our church. I think they're sitting in the front row and I'm serious. I want to send out our missionaries. I want to send them out there so that they're doing the work on behalf and we are pouring our support and we are pouring our encouragement into them. Amen? So we're working towards that and those are the ways that you can help. There's other ways you can get involved. The biggest thing, and please don't undermine this, is prayer. We have loaded our calendar with opportunities for you to pray. There is 10-10 prayer. If you walk in and you see a bunch of us huddled up up here, don't feel like you're not invited. You are invited. Be a part of that prayer service. There is what I affectionately call our boiler room. They get together in the back in the conference room and they pray through everything in our church. Your staff, if you're not aware, pauses every day at 11 o'clock to pray. We have our 24 hours leading up to the service. We are asking people to sign up and pray. I want us to get to a place where we are praying 72 hours in advance. Fill up those time slots. Soon we will be unleashing our, what we're excited is going to be our annual 40 days of praying and fasting. So that is coming around the corner. Be involved by praying. Be involved by being here. I talked about your attendance. And the third, be involved by communicating. Share the gospel. Real excited. This is kind of a last minute thing, but because of a lot of the questions that have come in for the Christianity 1-on-1 series, Dean, Connor, and myself are teaming up and we're going to be teaching a Sunday School class throughout the summer called Everyday Evangelism. We're going to be trying to come alongside you and show you ways that you can be communicating the gospel to people without having a theology degree, without having all of the answers, without knowing everything, just simple ways you can be communicating the gospel. We are so excited about this. If you're like, "I don't know what that looks like. I don't know what it means." Come and join us on Sunday mornings. Listen, friends, how great would it be if right now we sat here and said, "A year from now, our attendance is going to be 240, 250, somewhere around there, but at least a dozen of those people are going to be people we were able to lead to the Lord." That's one person every month. We were able to have baptisms for those people and we were able to have testimonies of those people. Listen, I'm not asking us to reinvent the wheel. I'm not asking us to go on and take on everything. What we are saying, with man, it might seem impossible, but with God, all things are possible. This is not something we are pulling out for our fame or our glory. This is not something we're pulling out so that we can be recognized in any other way except to be El City on a Hill, to be the light that God's called us to be. And friends, I truly believe that if all of these things start to happen, if we become unified like John 17, if we do those things, there are some things that are going to happen that you need to have your head wrapped around, okay? Like just think about that. If we set out to be that church over the next 10 years, think about what that could look like. If we're successful in achieving the render drawing and the marks of our people, then growth could take place. And now understand, our focus prior 100% is on establishing a biblical foundation and a strong grasp on Scripture. In fact, I've shared this several times. I've told our leadership. I've told the elders, the deacons, and the staff, there are three things that we cannot fail at and if we fail at them, it is detrimental. One, we can never loosen our grip on the gospel of Jesus Christ. We can never let go of that. Number two, we as leadership have to be healthy. Doesn't mean we always have to agree, but we have to be healthy. And number three, we cannot lose the trust of the congregation. I promise you, we will do everything we can to not only earn, but to keep your trust. Those things we believe are establishing a biblical and a gospel foundation and is upon that biblical and gospel foundation that everything else is being established. And I truly believe that if we do these things that we're going to do and we set out to do them, these are just some of the things. Just look at this slide here. These are just some of the things that could happen as a result, right? And that print might be too small and I apologize, but just think of it. We're going to see miracles. We're going to see God respond. We're going to see salvations. We're going to see testimony. We're going to see things happen. Again, imagine walking into this church 10 years from now and that render drawing coming true. Imagine all of the stories and all of the things that we're going to have to be able, have been able to see. Again, all of this is possible through God. That's where we want to go. And as a result, things might change around here. And this is my last kind of hard message to you. If you're not, if you're one of those people who you attend this church and you're like, "I'm really, really comfortable here. I kind of like this, just the people I know. I kind of like that we don't have strangers and weird people coming in. I kind of like that everybody's kind of kept together," then we might not be your church. And I pray that's not true. But if that's what your vision of church is, it's the first time you and I are going to disagree on what a vision of church is. I'm okay with muddy carpets. I'm okay with people getting a little bit loud. I'm okay with those things because if the gospel is taking place, broken people are going to show up. And we got to be ready to embrace that, okay? We got to be all right with things not always being all right. We got to be okay with things maybe not going our way. If you'll notice this summer, we're starting something that, that we haven't announced up until now. I'm announcing, so this is all default. But we're not offering a ton of activities as a church. We're not trying to program the heck out of schedule. You know why? Because you guys are already busy enough. And if we keep calling you to come here, come here, come here, you know where you're not going? You're not going there, there, there. Find what your neighborhood's doing. Go get involved in that. Find what's going on in Rochester, Clarkston, Oxford, Sterling Heights, wherever you may live. Go get involved in that. Preach the gospel. Share those things. And then bring those people back with you so we can hear about the good things God's doing. One of the hard parts about churches is metrics and what does it look like? I shared with you where some of our numbers are. Our giving has been strong. We needed to stay strong. We need to get stronger because the stronger it gets, the more we're freed up to do. The more people we have coming in, the more resources it allows us to man different ministries and to do different things. And so just understand those things. You know, just side note, we had House of Providence come in and share. I felt bad. It was spring break week. I think we had 138 people here that day. I went up to my buddy Jason and said, "We actually have more people once in a while." You know, it's, it's, it's all right. But I told him, "But I truly believe, Jay, the people that need to hear it are here." Do you know as a result of Jason coming here, we have three families right now that are in the adoption process? Three families that are serious about praying. That is the power of the gospel going forward. We didn't need 250 people here that day. We just needed the right three people here. And you think about that. If we start responding in small numbers like that, what is it going to do? Some of the metrics that we've said to the, we as a staff need to start preparing for is I pray that a year from now, one year out from now, we're, we're out of multiple services again. I believe that if we grow the way the parking lot needs to be, if we hit that 240 number, we're going to have to go to multiple services. So that could be coming down the line a year from now. Guessing what else? Five years from now, we could be talking about building Phase Two out here in front. We could be talking about expanding this building and doing what it is we originally believed God gave us a vision to do when we had this land. And I'm even going to take it a step further. You know what else could be possible if all of this stuff happens? 10 years from now, we could be planting a different church. 10 years from now, we could be planting a different church. Not Faith 2.0, not Faith over there, not Northern Faith, Southern Faith, but taking a group of people who feel called to go to a certain area. I don't care if that area is Pontiac. I don't care if that area Saudi Arabia. But having the resources to bless them and empower them to go and do what God's called them to do. How great would it be to be a church that in 10 years, we're planting another church? We can't do it, but He can. And friends, I tell you, all of this that I've told you, I hold like this. At any time, God comes and tells our leadership, tells us that this is not what I want your church to look like, I'm very willing to tear it up. I'm very willing to say, "God, not our will be done, but yours." We have to put eyes on something, because if we don't have vision, if we don't have eyes, we're gonna just stand still. This is where we're moving. I hope and I pray that you will be a part of it, because we cannot do it without you. Let's envision coming in here 10 years from now and singing the praises and the worship of all that God has done. Can you be a part of that kind of church? That's my question for you today. Will you be a part of that church? I said, I wish I had something more climactic to end it with, but that's it. One faith. One faith. Let's stand up. Let's go ahead and stand up. That's what I want to do, all right? And sorry, my one kumbaya moment of the month, I promise. Just grab a hand of someone near you. And let's just pray. Let's just pray for His will to be done. Let's pray that in 10 years from now, it's His church that we're walking into. It's His idea. Let's pray for the gospel to go forward. Let's pray that Jesus, His name above all else, is glorified. Let's pray. Father, you know our thoughts, you know our heart, you know our desires. And the emotions are just simply, because I can envision the lost being found, I can envision the blind declaring that they see, I can envision the lame saying, "I couldn't walk before, but because of Jesus Christ, I can walk." I can envision the testimonies coming in here and saying, "I was dead, but because of Jesus Christ, I am now alive again." Father, may we be that kind of church. May we not do it for our fame, may we not do it for our glory, may we not do it because of who we are, but may we do it because of who you are. May our identity be because of you, Jesus Christ. So in view of all that you have done, in view of all that you are, Father, may we live our lives in response of that. Father, I pray your blessing, I pray your anointing of the Holy Spirit upon every person here and the people who couldn't be here today. I pray, Father God, that you will empower them so much to know that this is their church, that this is their calling, that this is their responsibility. You say that the fields are ripe, they're white, they're ready for harvest, but the workers are few, and we declare, "Here am I. Send us. Use us. Use us to be the men and women, the communicators, the gospel messengers that you need today." Father, the rich history of Faith Church over the last 35 years has been up and has been down in our book, but in your mind and in your vision, it's been moving towards a point. Father, I pray that we are coming towards that point where we see clearly what it is that you've carved us out to be, what it is you've called us to be. May through the gospel, through the words of Jesus, through the truth, through the redemptive narrative laid out in Scripture, may we use that to call all of those into a saving relationship with you. Father, guard our elders. Guard our deacons. Guard our staff. Guard our members, our regular attenders. Guard their hearts and their families. May they be adamant about their personal pursuit of you. We also know, Lord, when we put ourselves out there, we know that there's an enemy out there who's looking to devour us like lions. But we do not fear. For in this world, we will face many troubles and hardships, but we can take heart, for Jesus Christ has overcome this world. And so, Lord, we already claimed victory in and through you. We pray, Father God, that we will be a reflection of you. We pray this, for our sake, for Christ's joy, and for your glory. And all God's people declared, amen.